All right, welcome to the special finance committee meeting of October sixteenth. I will call the meeting to order at five oh one. The first item on our agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the council. I don't see anybody on Zoom. Is there anybody in the room? No.
Nope.
Okay, so I will declare public comment closed. The next item on the agenda is staff reports. Are there any staff reports?
Um. Our audit is going well, along with the timeline that I had previously outlined, which is going to be to have the audit completed in December with reports issued in February. But we are still on track for that at this time, and we're looking forward to ramping up for budget checking.
Great. Any questions about staff reports? All right, if not, then the next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from September twenty sixth. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move you approve them.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Terry. Any discussion? All right, if not, raise your hand. All favor Chris, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Favor, okay. The minutes passed unanimously. Okay, we don't have any old business tonight. And our only real item of business is to discuss the year end appropriations, which begins on the there's never page numbers in our packet, begins after the minutes in our packet. So I know we've talked about this before, but I think there have been some changes to staff recommendations. And so I just want to ask if staff wanted to sort of walk us through the memo of what we're looking at in terms of the drivers briefly, since we've talked about it in a couple of places and then what we're looking at in terms of your recommendations to us. And someone is joining us in here.
Chris Kiefner, she's walking.
Okay. Go ahead.
The first two pages kind of go over what we talked about last time. We had expenditure driving savings with the resident state trooper. And then for revenues, we saw an excessive amount of building permits, fire code fees. We received a little bit additional municipal revenue sharing from the state and our consultant fee revenue was up. Altogether with this and savings from the Board of Ed, we're looking at having a surplus of approximately five point eight million. We did, the council did authorize additional appropriations in the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand at their September twenty sixth meeting, which left us with a good chunk of money to review. So we have three proposed uses for this funding. And the first one is we would recommend transferring one point four million dollars to the debt service fund. Based on the recently issued debt for the new elementary school, our debt service payments for fiscal year twenty five increased eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a very, a big impact to the average taxpayer. So by adding this money, we would be able to to smooth that out. You'll see there's a graph on that page. The red line is is the projected debt if we do not add any additional money. And the blue line is if we were to smooth that out a little bit. The one point four allows us to keep debt service under two million dollars each of the years, which I think is a good benchmark. And really helps with some mill rate stabilization to our taxpayers. On the call, we do have Bill Lindsay, who is our bond advisor. If anyone had any questions about the debt service and mill rates, they have a new concept.
Can you just explain the sort of difference in these projections versus what happened during our, what we were projecting during our, our, our budget conversation?
Sure, this projection, there was an additional bond done subsequent to the passing of the budget, which everyone was aware of, but those numbers were not included in the documents presented at budget.
So this chart that's on the page here that has the sort of projection is similar to a chart that we had in our budget book that we presented at town meeting. But there it it didn't take into account the issuance of bonds that were planned that we knew about that everyone was talking about. And so that was a is that correct?
Right, so basically, I, I, I think as Amanda was alluding to, and, and Bill being here as a resource can certainly speak to this, but what we're proposing doing with it's really one million basically for this year and then four thousand to be split over the next couple of years to kind of smooth that out. The term that we're kind of using is that it's essentially a mill rate stabilization effort to, to help spread that out over time. I think it's a, it's a sensible approach and Bill can speak to some of the, you know, the advantages of doing it that way.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill, and then I see your question, Brian.
Uh, you sure. So again, Bill Lindsay from Munistat with the town's financial advisor for debt issuance, but as as Ryan, Ryan indicated, and this is something that the town has done for, for a while, right? My experience going back twenty years is, you know, had this the, the debt service reserve fund or debt service fund that allows the town to net budget for the debt service. So you're still required to make the debt payment in full, but you're funding it from two sources. One would be net funding it through the, through the current mill rate and then drawing down a established reserve in for that service over time. And those two, those two buckets, if you will, are being used to make the annual debt payment. So what that does is, is it allows you to reduce the mill rate on that, from that one source, because you have another source already identified and set aside to offset it. And, and this has been the town's practice for, you know, the better part of two decades. And so, you know, I think here, given the, the sizable surplus that you have estimated, excuse me, for the last year, it seems like a prudent source of that, that funding. And it's consistent with the town's prior practice.
It's also just going to mention, because I don't know if Amanda touched on it or not, but just to call it out if she didn't. I think at the last meeting, we talked about the different ways of calculating our current fund balance and, and the methodology that we want to use moving forward, which is basically the gap methodology, the generally agreed to accounting principles methodology, which had we've been using that historically as opposed to as a budgetary basis, is that, yeah. We weren't as actually as close to or exceeding the council seventeen percent target. We were under that. And so with what's being proposed, eight hundred and forty thousand, of course, already being appropriated by the council at the previous meeting. And so with this additional two and three quarters that staffs proposing, it would have two point two million added to fund balance and, and that would essentially have us right at eighteen percent, which is a pretty good place to be. So I want to underscore that. And the second thing, well, two things on this front, I think it was councillor Berthelot, who, who, who made, I think, a very salient point, certainly resonated with staff, which was using a portion of the building permit fees specifically to help fund the affordable housing trust, because there does seem to be, you know, a sort of philosophical link there. And so you'll see obviously that in our recommendations, but the point to make here is that once or if these funds are deposited in the affordable housing trust fund, they are non-revocable. So basically unlike, say, moving into capital non-recurring, where if you appropriate there, you could redirect later if a need changes. In this case, once it goes into the affordable housing trust fund, you really can only be used for that purpose and there it will, will be. So there is a more in perpetuity aspect of that, just so that everybody's clear on the binding nature of appropriation.
Thanks. Brian, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a, a question and a couple of comments. The question I have is we're putting in one point four million dollars for debt service. And if I understand what was said, one million of that's going to be this used this fiscal year?
No, this would all start for fiscal year twenty five. We have enough money in our debt service reserve currently to finish fiscal year twenty four, but it'll help take away the impact of an eight hundred thousand dollar increase for fiscal year.
I probably missed, I probably, so I, I think what I meant to say is it'd be one million in the first year, which this case would be twenty five, right? And then two hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Okay, now for total transparency to the taxpayers may be a little confused because some of this is unused revenues and some is revenues that we received that we weren't expecting quite a bit. What is vital twenty three, twenty four budget number for, for this fiscal year? I, I know it was sixty three million and change. You know, this past, you know, summer when we passed a budget, what would it be after these expenditures in whole?
These expenditures wouldn't have any impact on fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. These are all occurring in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
Okay, all right. So we're putting two point two million dollars in the fund balance, correct?
Yes.
And then we're putting five hundred thousand into the affordable housing trust. Seeing that you're locking that up, and I would rather see fifteen percent affordable uses, affordable housing units as opposed to payment in lieu of that fifteen percent in the future. But see, see it's locked up and I just put it in the fund balance and move it to the housing trust if we need it later.
You have limitations on how much you can transfer each year. It's only point five percent of the total budget appropriation. So once it falls to fund balance, it would be considered a transfer and that would be limited to point five. Right now, since you are appropriating additional surplus revenue sources, you can do whatever dollar amount you would like.
Yeah, so let me just clarify a couple of things. So first, Brian, the fees that are the primary driver, although not the only driver of the surplus are not payment in lieu of developing affordable housing. These are straight building permit fees.
I, I, I understand that.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're not talking about at this stage, any developer being granted a payment in lieu of developing affordable housing units. These are simply fees that have been collected from, I think, one project in particular, which is building its requisite fifteen percent affordable housing has not requested an exemption. There may be future projects that request them and the planning and zoning commission is the body that will approve or deny those requests. And then I guess to rephrase your question, because I think I understand the distinction. We budgeted for the town to take in sixty three million and change in revenue. And we are now five point eight million dollars above that. Is that correct? So we have instead taken in somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty eight, sixty nine million dollars in revenue. Is that right?
Correct.
So, so how it affects the total of how much we're spending in each year is nuanced, because I think there's a, this proposal here is to spend that five point eight million dollars over the course of multiple fiscal years, but from a how big is the budget perspective? We budgeted to balance the budget to bring in sixty three and change in revenue, and we have instead brought in sixty nine and change in revenue.
That that clarifies my question. Thank you.
Uh, Chris and Tony, I see you. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. You said point five percent can, can be.
Point five percent can be transferred with the council's approval without anything else. If you go between point five and one percent, you have to have a town meeting to approve the additional transfer.
That means about three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
I have the same concern that Brian has about putting this money in this. It's gone. We don't get interest on it. We can't control it.
Just to be clear, yes, just to be clear, so
the trust does, but that's not the town, or is that mine? Because it was a trust, I assumed it was the affordable housing trust, not the town itself.
It's a town fund. So when we talk about, you know, how interest rates have changed in, in the last year or two. I, I thought about unpacking this a little bit in a council meeting, where I think councillor Coleman brought this up, but it didn't seem necessarily like the time, knowing we're going to have this discussion this week. So just to be clear, you know, we we have our money in the places we have our money. It's invested the way that's invested. And, and so what we're talking about, it's fun, fun to count. And we're not talking about you know, money that's sort of in a mattress somewhere, not in a financial institution, not earning interest. It'll, it'll be earning that same interest. If interest rates go up, it'll be performing essentially the same way. Regardless, so we're not losing the interest incomes.
We've lost only control over it.
Right, or if once you spend, I guess, obviously, as you, so you appropriate the money, you sort of obligated for this purpose. But the resources are still, again, like the actual assets are, are in a bank account or any interest. That's different than once you've spent it, then you actually have less cash on hand. That's going to affect how much your interest. So I just want to be clear that, you know, fund, fund balance, and I've talked about this before, it's not the amount of money, it's not your, your snapshot of your, your bank, your checking account balance. It's, you know, sort of a, a running aggregate, kind of like net worth of, you know, your booked expenditures versus your, your book revenue, but.
So, so our, our choices, I think, Chris, as it relates to the affordable housing trust fund, are either to decide that we would like to put some amount of money and staff have recommended five hundred thousand dollars aside for some affordable housing development in the future, that whenever that project or that need arises, the council will make a decision on whether or not to spend trust fund money on it. Now, or to instead put the, all of the available dollars into fund balance to essentially not appropriate them, do nothing with them. And then when it comes time for us to build our budget to have a policy conversation within the context of the greater budget, like to make a decision then about withdrawing that money from fund balance next, on July first, and moving it into the affordable housing trust fund. Or not, like we, we could say, no, we don't want to do that anymore, but that's the I think that's the distinction. If we put it in now, we're obligating it for that use into the future and we can't move it away from it in a budget process. And if we put it in savings, we're in fund balance now. We could transfer it out of fund balance in June.
So
quick question on that, what is?
Wait, hold on, Brian, Chris, Chris, the last question.
So is there a specific project? I mean, this, I'm, it's, I'm new here. This Evergreen or whatever it's called. South Eagleville Green. Is that something that we are, would be spending money on, this money on?
So that particular project is basically funded and the town has already contributed funds through various means, including the sewer.
So just to save you.
But a project like it, for instance.
So this is, there's for some future project for which we don't.
That the results in the creation of affordable housing units, project to be named later or whatever. That's what, one of the eligible uses for this trust fund as articulated in the ordinance that created the trust fund.
Okay.
Maybe staff has the answer to this question. What is the balance in the housing trust fund?
One point six million dollars.
Oh, one point six million dollars? Okay, that seems kind of light for all the units that we've put up.
This is future money.
Ten percent. What, what, what do we charge for a payment in lieu?
We, Brian, we, we don't. We haven't, besides funding portions of the Eagleville Green project, the affordable housing trust fund was, I think, primarily seeded by the council, not by accepting payments in lieu. I don't think there have been, if there have been any, have there, have there been any payment in lieu projects?
One, right, just the standard. So the balance that, that.
Ryan, I, is the standard, I thought the standard was building affordable housing units.
So they can have a hybrid. I, I'd have to check with Jen to see what the calculator, how the calculation was made. It's not a I guess binary set of outcomes. It's not either you build it on site or you do fee in lieu. You can do kind of a compromise catch. You can have some affordable units and then your fee in lieu goes down. I'll check with Jen. But I think that in this case, what that, that number represents kind of like a blend of the two options.
I thought there was also a payment in order to get a higher density.
That's my recollection, Ryan, that, that Haven is complying with the affordable housing regulation, but bought up density with a payment in lieu.
Yeah, I may guess the moral of the story, so like that's, I, I, I believe that's the project, the source of the funding we're talking about, you know, in terms of an accounting of how that number was arrived at, that would be a question for Jen.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure it did have nothing to do with buying out the affordable housing because they have agreed to do affordable housing.
And, and the council also made several contributions to the affordable housing trust fund, not correct? How much?
Fifty thousand was from the Rescue Plan Act. The part, there was a portion, I think it was five hundred thousand in total, and then it was a hundred and fifty thousand. Of that five hundred thousand went to Eagleville Green for the sewer connection and that larger effort. So I think that left three hundred and fifty thousand for other projects to be named later. So you're correct that of that amount, I believe, three hundred and fifty thousand is from American Rescue Plan already.
Tony, you had a question, go ahead.
Two questions. My first question is why aren't we putting more into the debt service fund? And the second question is and it's interesting that Bill Lindsay is here because this is the question I want to ask him. If, if the if the fund is at seventeen percent or at seventeen point five percent or at eighteen percent, what difference does that make in terms of our bond rating or of the costs to us?
Talking about general fund, fund balance.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I think there's, there's two things. One, to, to the point that Ryan made earlier in shifting the denominator in that calculation of percent fund balance, percent of expenditures. The rating agencies use the gap number, right, which includes the pass through for teachers pension. So it inflates the expenditures above what your, your actual budget number is. So it's a larger denominator, so it's bringing the percentage down. So the, the June thirty twenty two number is actually closer to fifteen percent than, than the seventeen percent. I think that's the point that Ryan was making earlier, but to answer your question, it, it doesn't really change much. You know, the, for, for standard and pores, their target for a trip, for an S, for a triple A score for that one metric is fifteen percent. So you're basically at that number now. So to the extent that you're, you're going to seventeen or eighteen percent would be helpful in maintaining the rating. But there are some other factors that are involved that are probably going to be limiting factors in terms of getting a rating upgrade. So those would really be the demographic numbers of the town that include the student population. In particular, per capita income is being dragged down by the inclusion of the students. And the second piece is the size of the town's grant list. Because again, the majority or half of it is roughly the university, right? They're, they don't really take that into account in terms of their, their metrics there. So those, those two factors tend to be the limiting factors and not fund balance. So, you know, having it be seventeen, eighteen percent, the, the additional two, was it two, two point two million here goes a long way to maintaining the, the current rating. But I don't think it's going to in and of itself be enough to put pressure on, upward pressure on the ratings so that it would be an upgrade the next time, uh, time the town came to market. I feel like the, the, those other factors, which unfortunately are kind of outside of the, you know, the town's control are the limiting factors on, on the credit rate.
Is there any, there's, we've had a lot of discussion about sort of speculation that if we boosted our seventeen percent goal higher, we way higher, you know, there's some towns in Connecticut that have twenty five or thirty percent of fund balance in Fairfield County that we would have a chance of improving a bond rating substantially enough that as we take on our municipal building projects that we've got coming up, we could see substantial savings to the taxpayer. So, you know, the investment in fund balance essentially would pay off. And so is there any level where you would feel like if we got there, we could see a, a significant improvement in our, in our next issuance or in a future issuance?
You know, the, the numbers that you mentioned, you know, somewhere around twenty five percent would put you well above the median for the peer group in Connecticut. And, and that, you know, that level would be you know, would, would help provide some, you know, an offset, if you will, to the, to the, to the limiting factors of the, the per capita income, because it includes the student population. So at, at those kind of levels, you know, that, that may, there may be a legitimate conversation for for an, for an upgrade, but that's a, you know, that's a meaningful increase over over where you are currently. And so that, you know, again, that, that's a policy decision that, that you, that the council would have to make is do you, you know, do you, do you feel like you want to get to, to that level? I, I could give you an estimate in terms of what the, I, I could run a calculation as to what the debt service savings would be from an upgrade, but I, I, I'll be honest with you, and, and we had this conversation between, you know, recently when I met with with Ryan and Maria and and Amanda, you know, the, the, the actual savings in debt service tends to be surprisingly low in the sense that it, it's really more about the prestige of being able to say, hey, listen, we have one of the two highest credit ratings from, from an independent party, you know, you can say that to potential home buyers or to potential developers. But from a budgetary perspective, it tends to be, you know, it's it's a, it's right now, it's somewhere between ten and fifteen basis points. So it's not as, as meaningful as you might otherwise think. And so I think that has to be weighed in the consideration of, of the policy decision is do you go from eighteen to twenty five percent?
Which is, which would be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or eight to ten million dollars.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. So I mean, again, I, you know, I, I could, I could, I could give you, you know, an estimate on what the, what the debt service would, savings would be on a ten million dollar bond issue, but you know, I, 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 I think from experience to go add another eight to ten million dollars to your debt service, your total reserve, or in this case, it would be on a signed reserve is a, is a pretty significant increase. And I don't know that, you know, you'd have to weigh that versus, versus the debt service savings. And I, I just feel like it, it, it might not be, you'd be surprised that what, what that debt service number looks like.
Can I fit with my second? My second question was why, why these numbers? Why not put another five hundred thousand into the, of debt service fund?
We would be fine with that. That's really a council level decision. This is a starting point.
Yeah, I think so. The short answer is, you know, there's a I think expressed priorities that have been batted around up to this point, and the recommendation is in front of you is trying to accomplish multiple objectives, not saying that to your point, Mayor, more would be helpful, but then it would come at the expense. Yeah, we only have a, a finite amount. So you're either reducing one of the other appropriations, where you're reducing the amount of fund balance, you're, you're growing your percentage.
My, my off the top of my head, I'd rather put it into actually reducing cost taxpayers in the debt services fund rather than putting it a, a huge amount of money, you know, like two point two million into the, into the fund balance. I'd rather put one point five into the fund. This is my own, you know, I'm not speaking for anybody that myself. And then put more money into debt service and and Chris has made another proposal, which we haven't, which we haven't considered at all yet. But so that, my question was, was there any real reason for this kind of division?
Trying to keep the fund balance at the eighteen percent and then kind of working backwards from there.
Okay.
Uh, Brian and then Chris.
Thank you, Ben. Um, yeah, if you put it in the fund balance, and I guess you got to earn interest and some of our bonds are at a lower interest rate, hopefully, that the interest rate in, in the fund balance will service the debt in a way in itself. Is how I'm thinking of it, but what really is the fund balance? The fund balance is a rainy day fund. That's kind of we lose sight of what that money is put aside for. It's, it's really a rainy day fund and I believe there's some storm clouds on horizon that we have to also keep an eye on.
Just to clarify, if we move the money into debt service, we're still earning interest on that. It's still part of the town's investment pool. The interest would then just go to debt service rather than being recorded in the general fund. So wherever we put the money, we still earn interest on that.
That was, that was the point I was trying to make earlier.
Chris.
So there's, there I think is the, again, I can play this, I'm new around here thing for a while and I may have to, because this is, it is there's a lot, there are a lot of moving parts. But I'm intrigued that this is all going to the debt service, which says to me. I'm intrigued that this is all going to the debt service, which says to me, it's just being put in a budget to be paid later. If this was my debt, I would pay it down. Do we have any debt that it makes sense to pay down? Or Bill, are we not allowed to pay debt down? What's the deal here? Why, why can't we get rid of some of our debt with five hundred thousand dollars or something?
No, that that's, that's a great question. Um, you certainly can do that. Unfortunately, it's not it it isn't, if you think of it in terms of your home mortgages or a credit card, you can't make an increased principal payment. Um, and firstly, it's just not structured that way. So it's not like you can throw an additional half million dollars in principal and it helps pay down that balance. It's the, we don't, that only would work if we're the, it becau- if we're at uh, the call date, okay? So remember, when we sell the bonds, we sell with a an optional redemption on the, for the town after a certain point in time. If you would, you would reach that point in time or you're beyond that point in time, you could potentially do that and pay directly for principal and and reduce the interest going forward. Problem is, is if you're not if you're, if you're not at that call date, then the interest is owed to the bondholder. There's no really way to 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 prepay that. And so that's the, that's the problem.
So
do we have any debts that we can get rid of? That did do we have any deaths we can get rid of?
I would have to look into that further.
Is it worth looking into? I mean, is it something you expect there might be something? Or is this just like, oh, God?
Our very first bond might have something, but there there's three or four years left on that one. I don't know if it would make a significant impact based on the annual cost of that bond versus the new debt, which has a higher annual cost.
To Brian's point of the marginal, you know, benefit, and then don't touch it.
The real problem is that before we started working on the school, our, we had something like hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of debt. I mean, it was just real small. We were like in the bottom seven of all municipal.
Well, and Amanda just touched on something, I don't have all the different, you know, interest rates or whatever in front of me, but I know that right now, I mean, our the the cost has gone up in terms of interest. So I mean, we're, in a sense, if you retire, if you could, even if there was a mechanism to retire some of the older debt, which carries a lower rate, doesn't have the same bang for the buck benefit.
Yeah, yeah. So all
I just want to agree with Brian on that. Um, I have mortgages for two and a half, three percent. Uh, I'm not going to pay those mortgages down and then go take another mortgage at eight and a half percent. Um, that's a very good point is sometimes it's not um fiscally wise to pay down uh, low interest debt and somehow exchange it for a higher interest debt in the end when you go to get bonds again.
So let me just, we we have, we have some recommendations to make tonight and essentially what we are the the, I think the question that we need to decide on first is, would we rather make a large contribution, larger than is necessary or whatever, contribution to our fund balance in order to then in the spring draw down from it as part of our larger budgeting process, the earlier conversation, that question that Chris asked. And then second, if if we don't, and we would rather put these dollars into things now, which would match what we've done in the past, although we haven't had a surplus of this magnitude in a while. Um, we do get them, right? The state has, over the last several years, given us a lot more money, which is something that, again, happened this year um, that we didn't budget for, for good reasons. And then we've had, oh, hey, there's supplemental pilot. All of a sudden, the state actually did this, like, we got four million dollars, what should we do with it, right? That's something that has happened. Um, but anyway, if if we do want to spend it now, what is the proper distribution of it? Um, I I tend to agree with with Tony. I think we have an opportunity to reduce the the obligation that taxpayers will have primarily from the construction of the new school over the next ten years. This one point four million transfer does it by a hundred and eighty dollars for the median taxpayer. I think we could do it by more. We're not going to eliminate the outlay with these dollars, but we could come we come pretty close, it seems to me. Especially if this is year one of a couple of years of experiencing higher than normal building fees and some other things that that over the course of a couple of years, we could come pretty darn close to eliminating the taxpayer impact of constructing an elementary school, which is pretty significant. Um, and then, and then I also personally, I agree with Terry that we should be funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as we get housing related fees and other expenses from from the town. So we should be using building fees and fire, fire code fees as a way to fund this trust fund and that we aren't ever going to be able, I think, to develop or help someone develop affordable housing in town unless we have funds in in the trust fund. We're not going to have a we're not going to have the ability or the desire to pull millions of dollars out of fund balance. We created this trust fund specifically so that we could have enough money to incentivize someone to come in and develop or redevelop affordable housing in town. And so I, I think the whole point of having it is to keep building one point six millions, nowhere near enough money to get a project going. I mean, Eagle Green is a small project, and I think their total construction cost um, is in the fourteen or fifteen million dollar range, if not higher. So my opinion is, is number one that we should make some policy decisions with these dollars. Um, and I'm comfortable with the ones that staff have presented here. If I I would be more comfortable, I think, if we did a little bit more in into um, into debt service and a little less into fund balance. I do think we um, as a council, we drew a little out of a planned fund balance expenditure in the spring and what we said then publicly, and I think what we all agreed to was that if there was an opportunity to put those dollars back, that we would. And so we have that opportunity. I think we need to fulfill that promise. But that's my opinion. Uh, Ryan?
Yeah, just one, I guess anecdote or or piece piece of information to supplement what you just said. Um, not to put uh, Amanda on the spot, but my own back of the envelope calculations. Somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars um, is what I think you could back out of the fund balance appropriation and still be at seventeen percent, which is, of course, the council's
That.
policy target. And I'd say that based on a sixty plus million dollar budget, if you move the decimal point over, one percent of that is six hundred thousand dollars. So just just for that context, in case it shapes how much money precisely, you know, if you go steeper than six hundred thousand, I think you start to erode and you dip below that seventeen percent. So a number like five hundred thousand is probably about as far as you want to go and still be at or above your seventeen percent policy target.
I agree.
So if I may, I I agree with the, I think your proposal, the unfortunate idea of having to pay for debt service by simply budgeting it, not actually paying for it. But having the effect that I believe we all want, which is as if we lowered taxes, and I like the idea of smoothing. I think the um a whip saw effect in in tax uh, rates is is a ridiculous um management practice. Um, so I think that makes a lot of sense. And as you've said, um, we're earning interest along the way. It's still our money. Um, if we can, Bill, I'm sorry to ask another dumb question, but you said you have to pay the bondholders the interest. Um, you can, you can, however, buy the, buy the debt back, correct? I mean, there, it's being traded now. People traded some today, probably.
Yeah, y- you you can, um, it it you you can, the 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 problem, well, um, yes, you can. And 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 given that, and I think this point was made earlier, given where rates have gone versus where they were, like, say, when the debt was issued in the two thousand eleven or two thousand nineteen issue, um, you know, current rates are a lot higher. So some bondholders may be willing to sell that uh, month, that debt back to the town. But what what we've found or what we've seen, because this is currently being done in the market, is is really that the larger the transaction, the more efficient it becomes. And when I say that, we're talking, you know, upwards of thirty to fifty million dollars. And because you don't get a hundred percent participation for the bondholders, you you may get up to fifty percent or or maybe sixty percent. And so it it tends to be relatively inefficient transaction. Um, but in in in, so you cer- and so you certainly can be done, but it doesn't, it hasn't really been done with a lot of success for smaller sized issues.
What's the, what's the current interest they're earning? Somebody might be earning on these instruments right now? On the high
So, you know, the uh, I just had the two thousand eleven open. I can open it back up. The two thousand nineteen bond issue, um, you know, the coupons were anywhere the ones that are outstanding, there are a few five percent coupons that run out to twenty five, and it steps down to three percent. So it's anywhere from three to to three and a quarter percent in twenty thirty nine. So that would be one where they could probably, you know, reinvest at a higher rate. If I go back to the two thousand eleven series bonds, um, and I'll open up that OS. Yeah, those were all three and four percent coupons. So again,
Thank you.
You know, in the current market, they 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 would be able to reinvest, you know, for at a higher rate. But I just, again, it would be a relatively small transaction, and I just don't know how efficient it would be.
Right. Thank you.
Is it?
Oh, whenever the time, I don't know what to I was it? Okay, so, um, I had a couple of 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 points. I think um, it's very appropriate that some of the money um be used for affordable housing, given that it's coming from housing. I think that reasoning, if it's to be called reasoning or that sort of a balance, makes a lot of sense. Um, I'm wondering about, what I would prefer to do is reduce the amount from five hundred thousand dollars to a lower amount. Um, maybe it's two fifty, maybe it's three hundred, given that the town can still, the the council can still um you know, given a great opportunity, oh, we've got a jump, we can still match our previous or this, the currently proposed uh, quantity um, and more presumably, and get us to where we are, where we wanted to be, where we thought we wanted to be, where it's been recommended we be um, with a five hundred thousand dollars. Um, but at the same time that we are developing stuff, I think we got to remember what we are sacrificing. And one of the things we're sacrificing every time we see a lot developed, whether it's for a um, individual home or a, or a um an apartment complex, is indeed open space, it's land. And I would like to see us um feel that there needs to be, I feel there needs to be a greater equivalency, and I hope I can bring some other people along on me, with me on that um, toward saving and preserving open space. And I say this for a number of reasons, and I wrote a note to Ryan, who thankfully printed it out. Um, but that's the first point, is that, hey, we're the, we're developing stuff. We got to preserve stuff, too. Um, you need a balance in that respect. And I was involved in the, on the um, you know, the plan of conservation and development um pretty deeply in one of the committees I was on, had to do with agriculture and so forth. And this is one of the values that people constantly brought up, was how they enjoyed the rural character, how they that, you know, it's bucolic here, there's open space, there are woods, there are trees, there are fields. That doesn't just happen. I mean, it 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 is, but it doesn't, it doesn't stay. Um, and it certainly doesn't stay if you're trying to encourage development. And so I think at the same time, if we want to encourage development, which I'm not really always sure is a great idea, we certainly need to make preservation happen, because preservation doesn't just happen, at least not in the kind of scale that development happens. So I think in that sense, it needs to be valued. Um, I I had made a note on here, and I've heard this in news reports and the uh, about three years ago, there was some reported at UConn on the real estate department there. And this guy did all kinds of research, some muckety muck there about how land values near places that have been preserved increase. Oh, and what happens when land values increase, property values increase? Well, then you get higher tax revenue. So by preserving land, it's not just you know, uh, uh, oh, boy, that costs us money, that's stupid, it's no longer, you know, giving us tax benefits. Well, in fact, it not only gives you tax benefits, but it also gives you environmental benefits. Um, it gives you aesthetic benefits, it gives you recreational benefits and so forth. Um, so in any case, my general argument is that we need to balance these things. And frankly, I think undeveloped land is a hell of a lot more valuable than developed land for many different reasons. And among them are those that I mentioned. But in addition to that, is clean air and clean water, things that we take for granted here. We've got plenty, it seems, of water until we have a drought. And we have plenty of clean air until there's a fire, thankfully somewhere else, if that's something to be thankful for at all. Um, but I think we need to value these things um, and pursue them as much as we pursue developers. So I'd like to see some of this money go toward open space, and I don't mean that it needs to purchase it, maybe it incentivizes it, maybe it leverages somebody else's, but it needs to be um, dedicated toward open space.
One of the, one of the things that is part of the multifamily uh, rules is that the uh, we encourage cluster development with open space preserved. Now, there, there has been in the past an authorization for up to a million dollars in um, in bond issues. And but it always had a time limit. Uh, no, we haven't used it in quite a few years. So so has that expired? Do we need to pass a new?
I don't know. I don't think it's expired. I think we looked and I think uh still over five hundred thousand remains in in bonds that could be issued, based on the previous.
There it is again, borrowed money, you know, and I'd rather use cash money than borrowed money.
So we we have an open space fund that we maintain. Amanda, do you know what the balance of it is off the top of your head?
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's how much we have in the fund currently to purchase open space?
Yes, separate from the bonded uh, open space, so fifty five thousand.
And all of that exists, it's sort of a a subset, if I'm correct, of our capital on recurring fund. So it's, it's not its own separate, it's within the capital nonrecurring fund.
Okay. Terry, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, um, I've, I've made this sort of speech before, and I apologize for those who've heard it. Um, I have agree entirely uh, that a real value in our town is open space. Uh, and it is very much why I like to live here. But I also recognize that um, if we don't build affordable housing, um, that with our own home values going up, that we are making it such that our community uh, does not become diverse, uh, and that we're keeping young people out. Uh, we're keeping, um, we're, we're, we're preserving what's here. And I think right now, in this time, where the real issue uh, is that there are two very important issues, and that we've done as a town a really terrific job of having open space. And I, and I think that value should continue. Uh, but that it's a value that needs to be weighed with the need uh, for affordable housing and uh, that where, you know, what we, what we invest is an open discussion for the town, for the council to have as it goes forward. But I think that the more pressing thing right this moment for this town is affordable housing, and that's where I would like to see the money go, so that we can ensure that we're a welcoming place and a place that uh, is open for change uh, and is a place that's going to make it such that young people can move here and that older people can stay here.
So if I, may I just say, I think we can do both. I mean, it's clear we can do both. My comments about the um affordable housing money is that, is the trust fund aspect of it, the locked in aspect of it. Um, we can still spend money, and I'd like to put a bunch of money, to me, a bunch of money in there. Um, and at the same time, have the ability to add to it. Now, you could say, okay, well, if we put the five hundred thousand, we still have the ability to add to it. Um, but if five hundred thousand dollars, you know, seems like the right amount now, and we put in three hundred thousand, but we could still add another three hundred thousand, well, um, we could do it. So.
So, look, Tony, let me, let me just, I I think that one of the things that's kind of struck, struck me about the surplus conversation is just how much we received over what is a totally reasonable amount to budget from our building fees. It's two million dollars. Uh, it's, 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 we budgeted fifty thousand. Uh, it's, 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 we budgeted fifty thousand. And we talked at the last finance meeting about the reality. That we're gonna have a couple of more experiences similar to this year, that we have. Two or three more significant development projects. Maybe not all of them will be built ultimately, but I think we can count on. Also, not zero of them being built. And so in the same way that the council has sort of set general guidance. For itself and for future councils about how to. Build up our fund balance, or how to spend this kind of revenue or that kind of revenue, it strikes me that we ought to have. That conversation about how to spend building fee dollars in excess of what we've budgeted, right? If we're talking. Twenty times our budgeted amount in building fees this year. For a project that is roughly the same size and scale as three, at least three more that are potentially happening in town over the next few years. I think it's reasonable, like we talked about at the last meeting, to not budget for that. But it's also reasonable perhaps to set some kind of guidance for ourselves for how to spend the money if it comes in. And I, I, I think both Terry and Chris have identified. Good ideas for how to spend building permit money, especially if. We're getting building permits because we're talking about a significant development and already in an undeveloped place. Um, Brian has a good point about how the additional facilities may lead to. Additional needs from our emergency services. Um. We talked at the last meeting about making sure we have enough inspectors on hand to make sure that the people who are building these things can get their units inspected, so. I don't want to do that today, but I do think it might make sense for us. To put some recommendations together. And then to sort of. With the money we have already received. Make some investments now and then. Be prepared during the budget process to make some additional investments with the money that has come in that maybe we're putting aside in fund balance. It just seems like. Too much money to sort of have an argument in a committee and make decisions and kind of do it every year. Um, I, I, I don't think we, I, I, I would, I would support. The recommended. Deposit into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, because I think that's a policy decision the council's already made that I support. I think considering future investments into open space preservation also. Uh, we just got a whole preview from a consultant a few weeks ago that says we need. To make a multimillion dollar investment in our existing parks to make them more handicap accessible. I don't see that reflected here. Um, that's, I mean, there's, there's a. I think there's things we can do to improve our existing open spaces that aren't necessarily preserving more of them through the open space purchase fund. Um. So I'm not really sure how to proceed with that, given that we're on this time crunch for these dollars. Um. Besides to pull more out of our fund balance. Uh, allocation from them and make some of those initial investments in addition to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Yeah, Ryan?
I just wanted to, you know, and and it would be really a a down payment, so to speak, on some of the improvements that have been estimated as far as. Uh, ADA accessibility goes, but just, just to remind everyone that. The eight hundred and fifty thousand that would be going to CIP, you know, that. That use or uses that that would fund, that would be determined at a later date. So one option would be all of that goes into those sort of improvements for. For park spaces. I'm not saying that's what you'd want to do, but just don't lose sight of the fact that. There's flexibility around those funds, and that is, of course, you know, an eligible use of the CIP funds.
So. Would it, I forgot about that piece when I was saying that, so in a, yeah, there's eight hundred and fifty thousand. Being proposed here to go into CIP, and that out of CIP is where the council currently funds both. Any kind of parks improvements to our existing space and any future acquisition that we do with cash. Brian or Chris, and so. Uh, would, Chris, would you be amenable to? Making that recommendation of a transfer now. To capital nonrecurring and then over the course of the next few months of count of this committee meeting, sort of put on our agenda. Developing a set of allocation recommendations for. Building in fire permit fees that the, that the town receives over the next few years. That could include. More expressly. Affordable Housing Trust, open space acquisition and preservation and um. Whatever else we, we can figure out, you know, police and fire, all those kinds of things.
Yeah. Thanks.
Hold on, let me let Chris respond to that, and then you can go.
Thing, um, I do think it's a, it's to me such a priority and an opportunity that you. Um, should do it anyway, from wherever source it is, and fine, if it comes out of here, fine, I think it should be a. General part of the budget regardless, just as a number of communities have um. Uh, transfer taxes, so that there's a constant revenue source that is dedicated to, to it. Um, and you can estimate that, you know, your transfers every year a little better than you can do this kind of a thing. Um, certainly I wouldn't say no, and I'm, and I, again, I'm new here, I don't know. Um, if this is a good idea or not, if I've been around longer already, I would say. Um, I could say more firmly one way or the other, but um. If that's the way to make it happen, okay. Um, but I'd like to see, um, I'd like to think that it's a greater priority in terms of a vision that the. Town slash town council in that order has, although it may not be, so maybe it really is town council and people who are. Thinking of themselves as leaders and forward thinkers and planners. Um, would realize that this is or come to realize or come to understand or appreciate or learn that it is um. Of frankly, critical value, and this is in a, on a landscape scale, certainly. There are many towns, in fact, in New Hampshire that have town forests. Uh, not just park and not just a preserve, but a real town forest. Um, and it's a given, and it's an expectation. Um, so anyhow, I, I, fine. If that's the way to go, Ben, fine, but I, I just feel like. We would be, it would be a stronger uh, fund and we'd be in a stronger position. And the decision wouldn't have, if an opportunity came up to help somebody. That was trying to do something, or again, whatever unimagined way it might happen, or simply a purchase, that the money's already there. Not that we have to go dancing around and convincing people and. Making it work at the last minute, and oh, we lost that deal. Because in, in fact, it was a deal, not an act of intentionality and. And um, purposefulness over the long haul.
For some reason, I think fire permitting fees should go in the direction of. Police and fire, I kind of how I feel about it. Does anybody else have that feeling?
Mike, my only feeling on that, if I may, can I jump in there? Um, is to say it's the same thing, and I, I'm not saying don't put it there, but it's not. Going to be consistent money. It's, it's a, it's a hit, and then it's gone. So maybe it goes toward a fire truck, you know, or shining it up. I don't, I don't know.
That was, that's what putting in the CNR does.
Okay, and I think paying down the, paying down the, or paying forward. Or whatever the hell it is, I, you know, the magic of putting money aside to pay off your future bills that you already expect that are debt, it's debt. Is a really good way to go because it means you can put your current money. Your, your regular money into these things like fire, but I also think, um, Brian, with respect to those things. These properties are gonna have a significant effect on our uh, tax revenue. On an, on an ongoing basis, on a continual basis, that we'll be able to benefit from.
No, I think that. Oh, go for it, Ben.
And that is, let me, let me, let me propose, so, so we're obviously like. Uh, you're right, Chris, we're, we are gonna have as a council over the next few years. A debate about what to do with additional tax revenue, right? We have a project, significant, large project under construction today. It will open over the next couple of years. When it opens, it will pay us a substantial amount in the millions annually in taxes. And if there are a few more of them, times those by a few more, right? And so that's a. Big chunk of our budget from a single taxpayer, and we will have a conversation about reducing the mill rate, about spending money. About building buildings and paying for the cost of the debt service that's required for their construction with the new tax revenue. And. And about funding things like police and fire to meet any needs that they may create, and so. I agree that the, the permitting fee is, is sort of one time. There are one-time capital expenses. Associated particularly with the fire department that we could take some of the dollars from, so I. We have to make a recommendation, we have to transfer these dollars. At our meeting on Monday, we can't. Push that decision any farther for accounting reasons, and so. I, I, I am in support of. Of pulling some of the proposed money out of our fund balance. Transfer, given what Bill has said about the likelihood, so I would, I am in support of. Hitting our seventeen percent target, which is where we want to be. Which would mean that we would put roughly one point seven million dollars into fund balance. And have an additional five hundred thousand dollars for us. To appropriate and then to take that additional five hundred thousand and put it into CNR. Which would make our total CNR contribution one point. Three, five million. And then to as a finance committee develop, spend some more time. Developing recommendations for how to expend that one point three five million out of the capital nonrecurring fund. Based on a set of priorities that we'd spend some more time sort of discussing and recommending to the council, right? So I. My, in my head, the order of operations should be. We take care of the accounting we need to take care of today or Monday. We put one point three five million in. CNR. At our next meeting, we talk, we, we ask staff to do some thinking, look at the P O C D. And identify, in addition to affordable housing, what are some other priorities that you could relate directly back? To uh, to development, the way you have, Chris, which I think makes a lot of sense. And then using that, we develop a set of recommendations. That the council can set as a policy, quote unquote, for how to spend one-time revenue associated with development. And um. The council doesn't need to follow those policies, we can break them at any time. I don't love doing policies for that reason, but I think it makes sense in this case. Um, and then. Hopefully relatively soon, once they've been developed and adopted by the council, we can. Divvy up the one point three five billion that went into CNR, make a deposit in open space if that's how we decide to go. Make a deposit into improvements of parks existing, if that's the way we decide to go, and whatever else it is that we decide to go. Um, and having already made the contribution into affordable housing with these dollars. Uh, Tony and then Chris.
So you're not recommending any change in the transfer to debt service?
No, you didn't.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
So unless folks want to, but I would say if we did, then I would either.
Would you want to increase it?
Yes. But whichever way we go, whichever we do, anything we do is going to be a tax. Benefit in the future, so it almost doesn't matter which of these projects we choose. Because if we decide to buy stuff with cash, that's gonna save debt service if we just. And reduce tax obligations. If whatever we do is gonna, is gonna work in the long run to reduce tax obligations. So whatever you guys feel like doing is.
So, so we have two point two million in. Fees out of this surplus. Uh, right now, we're at, if, if we make one point three five into. Uh, into CNR with the express purpose of turning them around as I've laid out, plus five hundred to affordable housing. You're at one point eight five of that two point two going theoretically back into being reinvested into. Areas that are related in some way to construction. Right, to development, and that we want to fund with the money we get from development. So you could go down. Or up from there, you're never, we're not gonna hit two point two.
All I was gonna say.
More out of fund balance.
You wanted to make a motion based on your first. Your first uh, you know, comments, I was ready to second it.
Okay, okay, I can't make a motion, but uh, look, before, before we finish the conversation, I guess.
You can make.
Why don't we talk, can we talk for just a minute about that idea versus uh, making a bigger. Contribution into uh. Into debt service. Uh, we're talking. Four hundred and eighty dollars over ten years for the average taxpayer. Down from six hundred and sixty over ten years with, so one point four million gets you a hundred and. Eighty, gets you eighteen dollars a year, roughly, right? Is that correct?
Yes. And I would add more, it is going to have a very minimal impact on that. Because the smoothing is really only taking into, is only smoothing out the first few years of the debt. After that, we're paying the debt that we had projected to pay.
So is, Tony, are you comfortable? With that staying the way that it is to smooth, but to then have the outlay be what we basically predicted, at least until we. Have additional tax revenue that we can offset it with?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, well then let me uh, I'll state what I said again in a way that. Uh. Chris can say so moved. Um. So I would recommend, my, my recommendation is chair, is to recommend to the town council. To transfer one point four million to debt service. Um, I'm sorry, to, to modify the motion that's in the packet on the last page of the packet. To use the set appropriations for one point four million. To debt service, five hundred thousand to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and one point three five million to capital nonrecurring. Is that correct, Amanda? That accomplish what we, what I said?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, I would just add that we, we note out that the additional five hundred thousand would come from U N S for revenue sharing.
Yeah.
Revenues, just so that we have the sources outlined.
Yep.
Meeting so that that's clearly.
And that would then leave us with two point. I'm sorry, one point seven million dollars unallocated that would automatically roll into fund balance.
Correct.
Which would put us at roughly seventeen percent.
Just north of by our back of the envelope calculations, yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Seconded by Terry, okay. Is there any further discussion on it? All right, if not, let's vote. All in favor is your hand. Okay, um. It passes. Thank you, everyone. Uh, the next item on our agenda then is communications, other business, future agenda, so Tony, go ahead.
The motion that you're supposed to recommend to the council. It has two parts. One of them is the uh, acceptance of the additional appropriations.
Yes, I, that was included in what I was saying, the motion in the packet, yes.
In the packet, but with the thought, okay.
Yes.
Want to make sure that when it comes to the council, it's all there.
Yeah, so um, I have a, a quick other, just an, an announcement, other business, whatever, so um. Uh, for Monday's meeting, I am supposed to be in DC. Uh, it is possible, I don't know what, what our dinner plans will be. Um, I'm there for work, and so they'll dictate them a little bit, but it is possible that I will be able to join you for like this agenda item. And so when it gets closer to Monday, maybe we can make a modification. On the agenda to put it at a certain time or something, so I can be there if I go. Right, so right now I don't have COVID. Hopefully I continue to not have COVID, but the likelihood is I will develop COVID. Most likely at some point over the next few days, in which case I will be joining you by Zoom, unless I'm very sick on Monday from my house, so we'll see. I, I'm still planning on the trip until otherwise, but. That's kind of what I'm thinking, and if none of those things work, then Terry and Chris, you can handle it on Monday. that's kind of what I'm thinking, and if none of those things work, then Terry and Chris, you can handle it on Monday?
I know Terry can.
Okay, um is there any other, yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Do you have a particular time you would prefer?
I don't know yet, so I think what we'll have to do is just put it on the agenda as normal and then, once I know.
Okay.
I think it's possible, I'll have some flexibility and can just sort of hop on and do it at seven or do it first or something. Um but it's also, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh is there anything else in terms of communications, other business, or any future agendas?
Well, the, your future agenda would be developing the, the strategy.
Yeah, so Ryan, are you cool with, and, and Amanda, are you cool with sort of talking to Jen and taking a look at the P O C D and coming up, you know, with the feedback you got tonight, but seeing if there's other parts of the P O C D that you could think about addressing? And maybe, I don't know if we want full recommendations, but at least the sense of where staff is thinking will be helpful.
You're thinking uh for commentary at this meeting or subsequent to the meeting?
Next.
No, not for Monday, like it for the next finance committee meeting.
Yeah, I think, think that's reasonable. The other thing too, just to, I, I don't know, we might not want to try to mix this into it, but one of the items um I'm proposing sneak preview for our agenda item review meeting tomorrow, uh proposing to add to this coming agenda is just scheduling the council's annual goal setting session, which will be once the new council is seated in December. So just kind of putting that out there that some of this discussion may be a, a good sort of breakout session.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Anything else? Those things. All right, then if not, we are ready to adjourn. Is our motion to adjourn? Moved by Chris, moved second by Terry. All right, we are adjourned at six thirteen. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Bill.